Good afternoon to our audience. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 3:00 PM. We'd like to thank you all for being here for our October County Commission meeting. I would now turn it over to Commissioner Minor to introduce our guest.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I have the honor today of introducing Father Dustin Fedden, who is the Executive Director of Joseph House. Joseph House is an organization on East Bradford Road, which was established by the Roman Catholic Diocese of Pensacola in Tallahassee. It's a nonprofit ministry that's dedicated to helping men reintegrate into society once they leave prison. And my Chief of Staff, Jody Wilkoff, and I have spent quite a bit of time over there meeting some of the men that Father Dustin and his staff have been helping with assistance as they transition from, you know, leaving prison into the Joseph House and into society. They're doing great work, excellent work. So I just wanted to thank Father Dustin for everything that he and his team are doing and to thank all the folks at Joseph House who are working very hard to reenter society. So Father Dustin, are you here, sir? Oh, great.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor, for the invitation.
And Father Dustin, did you want to say anything more about Joseph House?
How much time do we have? No, I'm kidding. Just briefly, that as Commissioner Minor has already mentioned, Joseph House is a community, a home for men leaving Florida's prisons and jails. We have many men that come straight to Joseph House from solitary confinement and some of the more inhumane conditions and incarceration, but we provide a restorative approach in restoring them to community by providing opportunities for work, for study, for university as well. And it's, to me, it's just a wonderful opportunity for us to be community even more, especially for those that are oftentimes on the margins of our society. Again, it's an honor to be here before you all, our Commissioners, and all of the men and women that are here today. Let us begin in prayer. God of all creation, you guide everything in wisdom and love. Accept the prayers that we offer for our city and county. In your infinite goodness, watch over those here in authority so that people everywhere may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. Help us, Lord, to see the forgotten faces of the poor and homeless in our community, to hear the cries of our elderly and orphans grappling with trauma, so that we may be a city vibrant with justice and mercy, and awaken our hearts to welcome the strangers and foreigners in our midst, and kindle each heart here with an intensifying love for all. We ask all of this through your most merciful name. Amen. Amen.
You haven't done a pledge, have you? Okay, can we please stand for the pledge?
Mr. Chairman, we have special folks to do the pledge, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Thank you. I have the honor of welcoming Cub Scouts PAC-10 to do the pledge and flag ceremony.
Call God attention. Will the audience please rise? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call God host the colors.
We're going now to awards and presentations. Madam Vice Chair, can we start with you with the recognition proclamation of Breast Cancer Awareness Month?
Yes, sir. as Breast Cancer Month, please come forward. Okay, and I'd like to thank the Chair for allowing me to read this proclamation. It has a special meaning to me because breast cancer has certainly adversely affected three generations in my family and other friends in this community and elsewhere. So this proclamation reads, it says, "Whereas October 2023 marks 38 years that National Breast Cancer Awareness Month has educated women about early breast cancer detection, diagnosis, and treatment; and whereas breast cancer affects 1 in 8 women in the United States every year and 2.3 million women worldwide; and whereas breast cancer is the second most common form of cancer and the second-leading cause of cancer death for women in the United States; and whereas routine mammogram screening and frequent testing enables the early detection of breast cancer, enhancing the prospects of successful treatment; and whereas raising awareness about the wealth of health information, education, treatment, and support available for individuals facing breast cancer can facilitate access to necessary care and resources, ultimately improving their quality of life; and whereas Leon County is steadfast in its commitment to supporting efforts aimed at breast cancer prevention, detection, and treatment; and whereas Leon County underscores the significance of mammograms, emphasizing that regular screening and early detection can save lives; and whereas the American Cancer Society tirelessly pursues a cure through vital research and tirelessly educates our community and all Americans about the risks associated with breast cancer. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida hereby proclaim October 2023 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Leon County and ask all citizens to join in this worthwhile cause to celebrate successes and memorialize lost battles. Dated this 10th day of October 2023, it's signed by our Chair, Commissioner Nick Maddox, all the other Commissioners, and it's attested to by our County Administrator, Mr. Vincent Long. So I present this proclamation to you all."
Thank you.
Would you like to have something to say?
Hello, everyone. My name is Maya Troop. I am the Regional Coordinator for the Breast and Cervical Program for the Leon County Health Department. I would like to say within our last year, we have done about 280 screenings or more. About 10 to 15 of those women within the last two years were diagnosed with cancer. Due to patient navigation and frequent screening, those women are on the road to recovery. So thank you all again.
Now, if I'm going to go a bit out of order, I think we'll do the National Friends of the Library Week proclamation. Those who are here and received that, come up, please. Thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Friends of the Leroy Collins Leon County Public Library raises money for the library system in order to provide resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's literacy, and special events throughout the year; and whereas the world, I mean, the work of the Friends continuously highlights our libraries as a cornerstone of the community that provides opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and to connect with the ideas and sentiments of others from ages past and present; and whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that Leon County libraries receive the resources they need to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, expert assistance in research readers advisory, and children's services; and whereas the Friends' gifts of their time and their commitment to the library serves as an example for all on how volunteer work leads to positive civic engagement and betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we proclaim that the week of October 15 through 21st, 2023, be known as National Friends of the Libraries Week in all Leon County and urge citizens to support and thank the Friends of the Library for all they do to make our libraries and communities a better place to live and to learn." This is signed by myself, as well as the Rest Commission attested to by the County Administrator. Congratulations.
I'd like to say thank you to the Commission on behalf of the Friends of the Library. My name is Bailey Howard. I'm the President-elect of the Friends of the Leon County Library. And on behalf of all of our members and all of our volunteers and all of our board members who are also all volunteers, I'd just like to thank the county for recognizing the commitment that the Friends of the Library have to making sure that the library continues to be able to offer its services to the county and the citizens of the county. Thank you very much for this recognition. It means a lot to us.
Now I'm going to present the MWBE MedWeek Awards. I am going to start with Women's Own Business Enterprise of the Year. Today, we have with us Ms. Tracy Cohen to receive that award. Come on up. It is a lot here to read, but I am going to read just a little bit of it. I'm going to start with, "Whereas Ms. Cohen has overseen significant changes in the industry and business that she's in. Target was created to serve the universities, government entities, and small businesses of downtown Tallahassee over the past 41 years. Target has evolved from a campus copy shop to a full-scale commercial digital printer, miller, and sign company with local and national clients." There's nobody in here who was in school in the early millennium, 2000s, that did not use Target Copy to print something. I spent plenty of money with you guys. You probably owe me money.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. "It moved the company headquarters to a 9,000-square-foot manufacturing space. 2016, Target brought another local mail company and expanded its mailing capabilities and customers. In 2020, the COVID-19 pandemic propelled the closure of Target's Tennessee Street location, staple of its community, ending a 38-year run in that space and officially transitioning the company away from retail." I cried that day. "Most recently, Target purchased Bowman's Promotional Specialties to expand its promotional product knowledge and market share. Tracy and the leadership team at Target Print &amp; Mail believe in investing in this community, and they actively support numerous local nonprofits and community events. And whereas when she is not working, Tracy enjoys playing tennis and spending time with her family. She serves on the Board of the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra, Leon County Schools Foundation. She also chairs the MWSBE Citizens Advisory Committee and serves on the Economic Vitality Leadership Council. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we do hereby recognize Ms. Tracy Cohen of Target Print &amp; Mail as the 2023 Women's Business Enterprise of the Year." It's signed by myself, as well as the Rest Commission, attested to by the County Administrator.
Thank you all so much. I really don't have a lot to say other than thank you all for supporting women and minority businesses as part of OEV and the minority business part of that organization. So you all do a wonderful job of making sure that minority businesses are represented, both in your construction projects and beyond. So thank you very much for that consideration, and thank you for this. Y'all have a great day.
Now to our Minority Business Enterprise of the Year. Dr. Mitchum. "Whereas Dr. Mitchum brings over 18 years of university teaching and leadership experiences to her wheelhouse as an entrepreneur, she is proud to be an Associate Professor of Counseling at Rutgers University and formally taught at Florida A&amp;M University, Florida State University, and the University of South Florida. Dr. Mitchum is a consultant facilitator, success coach, Florida Supreme Court certified family mediator, and a psychotherapist. Empowering teens, individuals, couples, students, and leaders for over 18 years. Dr. Mitchum has extensively, has extensive experience in human services, business, and leadership. Dr. Mitchum has published journals and magazine articles on diversity, multicultural competencies, diversities in the workplace, mental health, and mindfulness. And whereas Dr. Mitchum has extensive experience, I'm sorry, extensive expertise in training in diversity and inclusion, as an expert in the field, Dr. Mitchum has presented diversity and inclusion training to organizations, including the city of Tallahassee, Leon County Government, and San Luis Bank. She teaches leaders how to be multicultural, multiculturally competent, and leverage best practices and resources to promote a culture of inclusion while individuals from all races and ethnicities, identities, ages, nationalities, social and economic statuses, sexual orientation, gender, identity, expression, religion, political, and ideological perspectives, and physical and mental abilities can be successful and increase the bottom, the triple bottom line. She has presented on diversity training nationally and internationally. And Dr. Mitchum serves as the Tallahassee Leon County Commission, County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Dr. Mitchum is one of the two women who served on the Board of the Board of Directors for the Tallahassee-San Luis Bank. Dr. Mitchum also serves on Tallahassee's United Way of the Big Ben Board. Dr. Mitchum believes by taking some risk and having courage, you can redefine, and you can redefine the possibilities in your life. Dr. Mitchum is a thought leader in our community and has been honored with several awards and accolades. She was named one of the 25 Women You Need to Know in Tallahassee in 2020 by a Tallahassee Democrat. In 2022, she was recognized during Women's History Month as a leading lady by the Young Actors Theater African-American and African-Americans in Media, Media Mogul Award, the TCC Women in Leadership Award in 2024, completed the Jim Moran Institute Small Business Entrepreneurship Program SBEP Class 25, 15, 17, 2022, and is a graduate of Leadership Tallahassee Class Fierce 40. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Leon County Commissioners of Florida that we do hereby recognize Dr. Michelle A. Mitchum, President and Publisher of Tallahassee Women's Magazine, as well as Courageous Conversations, as the 2023 Minority Business Enterprise of the Year. This is signed by myself, as well as the Rest Commission, attested to by the County Administrator. Congratulations."
Thank you so much. What an honor. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of the Leon County Commissioners and the Office of Economic Vitality, I am humbled and deeply honored to be recognized for this prestigious award. As publisher and CEO of Tallahassee Women Magazine, this recognition holds immense significance for me. Our magazine is not just a publication, it's a platform dedicated to uplifting the voices of the diverse women of Tallahassee. To be a part of this movement is a privilege beyond measure. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to all the members of our community who have steadfastly supported our mission to uplift women. Their unwavering belief in our efforts has been instrumental in our success. Together, we have strived to ensure that every woman sees herself in the pages of Tallahassee Women Magazine. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are the pillars upon which we stand. We firmly believe that every woman, regardless of her background, deserves to be celebrated. We aim to break barriers, shatter stereotypes, and create a world where every woman can envision herself as a powerful force of change. This is a testament to the collective dedication and unwavering commitment of our team. The honor is not just mine. It belongs to every woman who has shared her story, every advertiser who has believed in our vision, and every contributor who has lent their voice for our cause. This recognition serves as a powerful reminder that when we come together, united in our pursuit of equality and empowerment, we can create a future where every woman can thrive. I want to share with you the African philosophy, Ubuntu. I am because we are. Thank you so much for this incredible honor. Thank you.
Of course. Keith, there. Y'all come up.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to just take the opportunity, Mr. Chair, to congratulate our MedWeek honorees, Dr. Mitchum and Ms. Cohen, Cohen, for their business, not only for their business acumen, but they are pillars of our community. Not only do they have successful businesses, the Women's Magazine is just second to none. You know, it's first-class. And we look forward to that magazine because it brings us up close and personal to individuals, not only those that work in our community, but we see those that contribute to that magazine. Ms. Cohen, what can we say about her? I go back to her mother, and she expanded the business from her mother and has just made it a national, international business. So I just, being the only woman sitting up here, I have to say this. You all are pillars in the community. Not only are you successful, but you all give back to the community. Just last week at the golf tournament that was sponsored by the Capital City Chambers, right up there, top knot, at the top, great supporter was the Women's Magazine. And that golf tournament was designed to raise funds for our Title I schools here in Leon County. So they are great business leaders, successful business leaders, and Ms. Cohen and her husband gives back tremendously to this community as well. Great philanthropists. We appreciate all that you all do. You make a positive impact on our community, and your recognition during MedWeek very well-deserved. Thank you so much for what you do for Leon County, Tallahassee. We applaud you, and we know we are looking forward to more great things that you all will be doing in our community. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
A man who really needs no introduction, our 2023 Reggie Roll Awardee, Mr. Steve Beasley. Whereas Mr. Beasley is a native of Tallahassee, Florida, known throughout the community as a sharp businessman with a servant's heart. He strives to make a positive, sustainable impact on Tallahassee's South Side. Mr. Beasley attended Florida A&amp;M University, majoring in Business Administration and minoring in Accounting and Marketing in 1965. Mr. Beasley founded Beasley Associates, a private business planning and public relations photography agency. Mr. Beasley is a widower, Nikki. He has one lovely daughter, Cheryl. He is also the proud grandfather of Nicole Mariana, who are the joy of his life. And whereas Mr. Beasley has been instrumental in many activities and events that have improved the quality of life for individuals in the Tallahassee area. He volunteers to help make a difference in others' lives, assisting with the help, assisting with Helping for the Heart Annual Thanksgiving Dinner, which serves about 2,000 persons, and the Soul Santa Clause Program, which provides fruit and gifts to approximately 600 unprivileged children. He also volunteered with the Capa Alpha Psi Fraternity Scholarship Fund of Florida A&amp;M University, Bethel AME Church Youth Program Basketball Team, and the Big Ben Hospice. Additionally, he founded the Capital Outlook and the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation. Mr. Beasley has been a consultant for numerous special projects through his volunteer services with the Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation. Leonard Weston Elementary School Outstanding Volunteer of the Year, Tallahassee Wine Festival Service Recognition Award 2000 and 2003, NAACP Silver Life Member 2002, and the Service of Remembrance of Big Ben Hospice Honorary Chairman 2004. And whereas Mr. Beasley is affiliated with numerous civic and social organizations, including Boy Scouts of the USA, Florida A&amp;M University Alumni Century Club, Alpha Phi Omega National Honorary Chapter, Tallahassee NAACP, Mount Olive Lodge Number Five, Frontiers International, Rattler Strike Foundation Incorporated, and the Tallahassee Urban League. He has also been a Bethel Missionary Baptist Church member for 28 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of, Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that we hereby recognize Mr. Stephen Beasley as the 2023 Reggie Roll Economic Development Champion of the Year. It's signed by myself as resident commission attested to by the county administrator.
I think the chairman said it all. So I'll take my time to thank the county commissioners for supporting our Soul Santa Claus for over 20 years, and we've serviced over 35,000 kids, about 500 bicycles, supporting the Boy Scouts annually. Our Golden Eagle Banquet at Campbell Stadium, Governor's, well, Club up there, every year they have a table, and that table is expensive, but it goes a lot in the community. Also, they support our Black History publication, which we have done 38 publications over the last 38 years. They are in there with a full page every year, thanks to Mr. Matt Cavell. I know he get tired of me begging him, but he always come through. But thank all of the commissioners individually, what you have done, you know who you are. And I also would like to say thanks for your help of the Martin Luther King Celebration and the Rotunda of the Courthouse each year, where Bill Proctor and myself give scholarships out to high school students and recognize local Black leaders and white ones too. But thanks again, thanks again, and mainly keep up your good work of supporting the foundation. I would like to say that I've been in Tallahassee 81 years and in business 60 years. Thank you, Lord, for helping me be that at long, and my parents. Take care.
Commissioner Proctor wants to get your fish.
Of course. Senator Vice Chair.
Just very briefly, just want to congratulate Mr. Beasley on receiving the Reggie Roll Award this year during Midweek. And we all know Mr. Beasley has the heart and soul of the community on his shoulders. He's always concerned about the well-being of all the citizens, but particularly and specifically our children. Ever since I've been in Tallahassee, he's always made it his personal business to make sure none of our children go without the gifts or food or anything during the Christmas holiday. Now, he's involved in a lot, from our history programs, what is it, toys for at Christmas time, but he has a special affinity for our children. And I think I love and appreciate him for that. His Reggie Roll Award is very well deserving, and I know Commissioner Proctor wants to say something as well, but congratulations, Mr. Mr. Beasley, 81 years, and you have certainly been a great asset to this community. You have been a positive impact in the lives of our children, and we thank you so much for all of your efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Proctor.
Thank you. First of all, I love Mr. Stephen K. Beasley, and maybe he first loved me. Thank you, Mr. Beasley, for all the multiple things that you've done in my life. Baby Rattler, Stanley Sims, you remember that Beasley and Associates took all of our school day pictures at FAMU High? And when I was Editor of the Year Book at FAMU High, Mr. Beasley and his staff served and gave us tremendous service. I really don't remember a contract that we had, and if we owed you some money, Mr. Beasley, because I, I don't remember the money part of it, but we probably owe you some money. There's a family portrait of my mother and my father and myself, and Mr. Beasley on Easter Sundays, everybody in the community went to Mr. Beasley's office to get your family portrait. I don't know if my daddy paid you, Mr. Beasley, for that portrait, but that was on William Senior's bill and not Bill Junior. But we still got the portrait, and it's the only family picture that our family even have in Mr. Beasley. What he's represented at weddings and all things FAMU over the years, no one could articulate the evolution of our community quite like Mr. Beasley. I've always seen him at everything. And before there was the internet and you had this omnipresent presence, there was Mr. Beasley, because he was everywhere at the same time. Then I remember words that he gave me at a FAMU football game. I think I'd come down to the football game, I was at school at Howard, and my sophomore year, I was at a football game in Bragg Stadium. I don't know why Mr. Beasley told me this, but I showed believing. And he said, man, you know, 60% of success is confidence. He shouldn't have told me that. I believe him. And, 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 and Mr. Beasley, I want you to know, man, I, I don't know why you told me that, but man, I kept what you told me. 60% of success is just confidence. And that resonated, and you have no idea how many days I banked on those words right there. Thank you so much for what you've meant to my family, our entire community over the, over the years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Beasley, you are a Leon County treasure. You said that you were in business for 68 years here in Leon County. I, I've had the honor and pleasure of, of knowing and working with you for some of those years, a small fraction of those 68 years. But I mean, the, the amount of work and benefit you've had for this community is immeasurable. Soul Santa, MLK Foundation. I went to your birthday party, I think it was number 75, and to see all your friends and family members and business partners over the years, it was a great way to kind of get a good sense for all of that work and, and, and charitable work you've, you've poured into this community over 68 years. So thank you for everything, sir. Your legacy is intact and very strong. Thanks so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Mr. Beasley, you have been, again, a staple of this community. I said it before, it's, it was kind of shocking to me that you had already won the Reggie Roll Award for just how much you've done to our, done for our community. And so with that, I want to say congratulations. I don't think there's a person up here who would not say that you have not just shaped us as a community business-wise, but you've also shaped us as a community politically as well, and we appreciate the time and effort that you put in. It, it really took away from your family to be as involved as you are in not only, again, just the business side of things, but the political side of things. And so we thank you, and we look forward to many more years of watching you do what you do here in Tallahassee and Leon County. Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say one other, please, one other thing. Mr. Beasley's political acumen is uncanny. I don't know what polls, what he goes by, but in 1998, I was running for reelection. And Mr. Beasley, two weeks before my reelection, stopped by my office, he said, man, I ain't never seen nothing like this before. I said, what you talking about? Your race. I said, what you mean, Mr. Beasley? He said, it's too close to call. I said, Mr. Beasley, we got this, we, we in good shape, we working hard. He said, no, I've never seen anything like your race, never. And two weeks before the election, Mr. Beasley said, I can't call it. And I thought he was playing, get made my heart stop. And two weeks later, I won that election by 12 votes that night. And the next day on the recount, I picked up three more. But Mr. Beasley told me two weeks in advance, he said, I can't call it. Now, how and what he sees and what crystal ball, I don't know. But two weeks out, he said, your race is toss up, I don't know. So I had to share that with you because when he tells you something, you can take it to the bank.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right. Thank you all. Mr. Administrator, we have any speakers on consent or non, or non-agenda items?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have just a few. The first two with an announcement from the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. We'll invite up Cory Melton and Shelley Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer item number six, if we could, I didn't get a chance to weigh in and to withdraw from consent, but I'd like for us to take number six off of consent, please.
I'm sorry, excuse me for a second. Madam Attorney, we have to weigh the rules, correct? Is there a motion to weigh the rules and give, give Commissioner Proctor the ability to pull item number six? Moved by Commissioner O'Keefe, the second, seconded by Commissioner Minor, the objection. Seeing none, show item six as pulled and the rule approved. I would be, ma'am?
The policy wave.
The policy wave, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Cory Melton, and I am here, I work with the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, but Shelley and I are actually here today on behalf of the Talent Development Council, which is a group of us that come together monthly to work on workforce and talent-related issues. So it's the Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce, Tallahassee Community College, we have Lively with us today, BJ Van Camp, Office of Economic Vitality, Leon County Schools, and Career Source Capital Region. So today, we're here to talk with you about the North Florida Worlds of Work. As you can see, it is next week, October 19th and 20th. This is a career expo like we have not seen before. This group of us traveled to Alabama several times last year to see this event that they have done across the state for 10 years or so. So we were the first ones to bring it to Florida. And what I want you to think about is if you think about EPCOT, and every world's a different country. Everybody got it in their mind? Well, the Worlds of Work, every different world, and there's 10 of them, is a different industry. And within that industry, within that 10 in the world, are employers who are doing hands-on activities for our ninth grade students. So we have about 3,000 ninth graders from Leon, Gadsden, Franklin, Waukulla, and Jefferson Counties. They will come through between Thursday and Friday and experience all 10 worlds, doing these hands-on activities with the employers. We have about 100 employers who are doing it. We met with them this morning. It's 100 different employers, but there's probably 200 to 250 employees that will be there over the course of the day, doing these activities with the students. We have 250 volunteers and untold numbers of hours and dollars that have been poured into this event. And it's a very intentional event. We are doing this because we need our students, as you know, to know about the great careers and opportunities that are here in our region, but we also need them to know it early because they have, and ninth grade is when they start making their decisions, once they've kind of got an idea of where they might want to go with their career, they've got to start making decisions like dual enrollment classes and AP classes, or if they want to take a certain career path or extra science. So the timing is very specific for us. And as you can see on the slide, it's on the campuses of Lively and TCC. Again, very intentional. We could have done it in the Civic Center where it's very easy in the case of rain, so please, everyone pray for no rain or hurricanes next week. But we're putting it on campus because we want every ninth grader to come and put their foot on our campuses. They need to know where it is. The instructors from both TCC and Lively will be there, working with our employers, again, to get to know the students. And then on that Thursday afternoon, from 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock, our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders are free to come after school, bring a parent or guardian, and again, do those same activities, meet those same employers, and really start to know what's available in our region, and start making relationships with those employers.
And I just want to add that, as you know, Leon Works has been in our community now seven or eight years. I remember the first Leon Works event that was actually held out at Lively Technical Center at the time, later became Lively Technical College, and we outgrew that space after the second year, and that space moved on to the Civic Center. And we're excited to have both WOW and Leon Works Expo to be part of our students' experience. And the way we look at it is with WOW, we're targeting our ninth graders as they really begin to think about their career pathway, what industries they might be interested in, what are the jobs in our region? And then for our juniors and seniors, as they're getting ready to walk out the doors of their high school, as they graduate, that we have the Leon Works Expo that really gets them ready for that what's next piece. And so our hope is that as our community continues to work together on workforce initiatives, that we will really be building the talent pipeline that is necessary to move our community forward, and hopefully keep some of our students right here in our community, or at least get them to come back to us. So these are two events. We hope you can make it out next week to WOW. I know Commissioner Welsh, you've probably heard a lot about it out at Child's High School. We're really excited. This is the first time for Leon County Schools that our superintendent has committed that every single ninth grader will participate. And so we're really excited for that, and then to get our surrounding communities to be a part of it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just wanted to say thank you to those two ladies. Cory and Shelley are absolute pros when it comes to workforce development. Excuse me, our community is blessed to have you, whether it's Talent Hub at the Chamber and, and all the stuff that Shelley has done, you know, both as a high school administrator and a college administrator, and now moved over to TCC. You know, Dr. Moore, you know, big shoes to fill, and Shelley Bell has transitioned over there. I think that we're all very happy about that. The Worlds of Work event is just really the culmination of a lot of work I know that y'all have put in. As we continue to create jobs, we know we're creating more and more jobs, we're getting excellent reports, we have to find ways to fill those jobs. And so whether it's, it's Talent Hub or Worlds of Work or Leon Works, I know that this board is committed to, to trying to create those pipelines. And, and I just want to, again, congratulate y'all for all the work you do. It does not go unnoticed, and it is vitally important. As a high school teacher, you know, the synergies are being created. I know that that dynamic has changed now, that not everybody just thinks they're going to go straight to, to university, that, that we have really, really good-paying jobs, skill-based jobs, that are available right here, where you can make a really good living. And, and it's things like Worlds of Work. I mean, every single ninth grader in the county is going to go to this event. I think that really cannot be overstated how important that is. And so those kids will be exposed to things they never even knew were possible, as far as, as possible careers for themselves, ways to earn a living, ways to contribute back to our community. So just wanted to, again, say thank y'all so much for everything you do. It is, I certainly, certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers, Mr. Administrator?
That concludes your speakers.
board is committed to trying to create those pipelines. And I just want to, again, congratulate y'all for all the work you do. It does not go unnoticed, and it is vitally important. As a high school teacher, you know, the synergies are being created. I know that that dynamic has changed now, that not everybody just thinks they're going to go straight to university, that we have really, really good-paying jobs, skill-based jobs, that are available right here, where you can make a really good living. And it's things like Worlds of Work. I mean, every single ninth grader in the county is going to go to this event. I think that really cannot be overstated how important that is. And so those kids will be exposed to things they never even knew were possible, as far as possible careers for themselves, ways to earn a living, ways to contribute back to our community. So just wanted to, again, say thank y'all so much for everything you do. It is, I certainly, certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other speakers, Mr. Administrator?
That concludes your speakers.
I have a motion for consent, except for item number six, which has been pulled by Commissioner Proctor.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Comban, seconded by Commissioner Minor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Mr. Administrator, item number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number six is a voluntary annexation of property located at the northeast corner of Centerville Road and Pemberton Road. Commissioners, as you know, voluntary annexations provide for a technical review that follows Florida statutes. You'll see the analysis that this item provides for that report from all of the responsible areas of the county who reviewed this annexation. And we are recommending that you not object to the annexation based on that. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Any speakers?
We have no speakers on this item.
Mr. Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I was, I was, saw this measure, which I need to pull it to vote against it. And I was, wanted to pull it just to vote against it and not comment. But I pulled it and was looking at agenda item number 21. And I had to pull it because as I was looking at our preparation for our retreat, areas of which we would focus our vision, mission, and core values around economy, environment, quality of life, and governance. And under the governance section, there is the statement on attachment one, page 12 of 20, that of our priority is to exercise responsible stewardship of county resources, sound in financial management, ensure that the provision of services and community enhancements are done in a fair and equitable manner. Those words right there struck me, and I believe them. I trust these words. I rely on these words, that we're focused on community enhancements that are done in a fair and equitable manner. So I was kind of listening to the news last weekend, and there was a sewage spill, I believe on Capital Circle. And looked in a newspaper, and I saw this huge sewer pipe, huge, that the newspaper said was buried 10 feet down. And it was just loaded, million gallons of sewage spill. I was aware that the people of the South Side who don't have a large sewer pipe marvel such a big pipe like that existed. Never seen one. But it was there, dug up, plain view, 10 feet deep, for the North Side. What this item does is that it gerramanders, and it is racially motivated there on Pemberton Road. And what it offers in its attachment one, page 13 of 16, is that the feasibility study reveals that water and sewer infrastructure will be extended based on development plan. See, urban services will be provided in the same manner as such services are provided within the rest of the municipality. I wish I could get some of that. City departments have reviewed to confirm the availability of services such as electorate, water, sewer, police, fire, and transit, and perim, star metro. The property is within the urban services area. See, this is the kind of thing that when the South Side has been tasked with an 8.5% property increase, but nobody reads us into the record, and we are not given the fair and the equitable inclusion and access to the same services as this area just shy of Interstate 10 on Centerville Road. That's a black neighborhood back there. Them people been back there since time began. In every area and pocket and niche where black people live, they are not in the city. Why is the neighborhood on the left side of Centerville, before you go across I-10, is in the city? All the neighborhoods. But where these black people live on a dirt road, it's just unlike the others. But a developer comes along, and if you look at the map, you will see that this is going to be the perfect exit and likely a, for when the new exits are put in, there at this interchange, this is likely going to be a hotel, gas station. I'm looking at these trees, I can see convenience stores. I see a lot of things here on this corner. You can see the future is right there. This is wrong. Why can't the rest of these people who live in these blocks, they not included? They still excluded. Why? Why, Commissioners, can't the South Side, which is also inside of the urban services area, how come we can't get some chatter and some talk and some words on a sheet of paper, just like this, that goes to take this piece of property, which is contiguous to, right next to the interstate? But we don't want the rest of y'all. We just want that right about an interstate. And so this is economic and racial gerramandering. This is developers in the city are leaving poor black people behind. This is the same thing that's occurring inside the urban services area, all along Capital Circle, across the street from Southwood, and anywhere you find pockets of black people living, they don't get the whole package of city services. And I think, and I'm asking Commissioners for, at the end of the meeting, maybe think about it a little bit more clear, but we need a letter from this commission asking for fairness. It hurts me that we got people paying 8% increase on their property taxes, and they still can't get what they paying for. This is wrong. And I'll be asking at the end of the meeting for your support, us galvanizing and living up to this governance statement in number 21, that talks about fair and equitable government services. It ain't fair. It's not equitable. So I'll bring it up at the end of my time, but I need it for you all to pay attention. And when you cross the street, go across the street, go across I-10, and there's a primitive Baptist church right across from neighborhood, it's a little black church. And there's a neighborhood up there where the city goes, and it's the city inclusion. Then it skips the black church, which is left outside, and then it goes to, I think that's Victory Garden, and then you back in the city. We just skip black folk left and right, all over the city. It makes me want to, makes me want to run for mayor of this city, for someone who wants fairness. And if we can't get a mayor that cares, I'm gonna run for it and fight from another side of the bench. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion for staff recommendation? Moved by Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Wait, sorry. Is there a motion?
I move that we deny the approval of this.
Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner O'Keefe, you on the floor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I'm opposing this request for a number of reasons, some of which Commissioner Proctor has brought up. And when I look at these, it's important that we consider, this is not just about one request in one parcel. We have to look at how do we govern overall, and what does one decision do to impact the other decisions? Because whether we like it or not, every decision we make on a similar issue will be compared against our other decisions. And so when I look at this map and I see this one carve-out for this, this one carve-out for this undeveloped land, and all these other neighborhoods that are not going to be included in the city, my question is, will they have access to sewer? Will they have access to city services? Will, this is extending the urban services area. The city bus does not go out that far now. In exchange for this, does the city bus get extended out to this border of the urban services area? And I'm just, it concerns me that we are being asked to consider one owner's plot in an area of existing neighborhoods that we don't know if they want city services, and I don't know why we would take a circle like this and skip over all the existing neighborhoods that have paid property taxes and that may want these services and have existed, and approve one puzzle piece that doesn't connect and carves out the other areas? The other reason I'll be opposing this is when we look at our development plans and our affordable housing plans to fill in missing middle, our environmental responsibility, and our smart growth, we talk about infill, and this is the opposite of infill. Are we to understand that there are not other areas that could be developed in the existing urban services area? I think the answer for that is no. The other thing is that we, I do also have questions. I'm sure the answer is yes, but after a million gallons of sewage is spilled on this side of town, outside of some natural disaster, I would like to know, do we have the actual capacity to serve this, even if we approve it? And so to me, that's an issue, but that's not even, we don't even get to that issue before I think we should vote down this request. Because we shouldn't just look at this as one minor parcel of a few acres from one developer. We need to look at this as when we sit in our comprehensive plan meetings, in our affordable housing meetings, in our growth meetings, and we talk about prioritizing infill, these are the decisions that go against that. So I'll be opposing this. Thank you.
Madam Attorney, I've been around here for a long time. I think it's pretty problematic for us not to have, to deny this without grounds. Could you explain what grounds we could deny under, and what happens if we don't have grounds to deny, and we deny? Give me a second.
Yes, Mr. Chair. So Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes provides for two types of annexation. One is voluntary, one is involuntary. This is a voluntary annexation, meaning this particular property owner wants to be annexed into the city and has made that request, which, under the interlocal agreement between the city and the county, has to come to the county for consideration. There are statutory criteria that a property has to meet to qualify for annexation legally. Basically, three things. It has to be contiguous with the city limits, which this is. It has to be reasonably compact, which this is. And it cannot create enclaves in order to ensure proper delivery of urban services to the areas to be annexed. It meets these legal requirements. Staff has otherwise looked at the delivery of services. As of July of this year, a feasibility study had to be prepared. It has been and has been provided. If there are other questions of staff who reviewed the annexation request, I'm sure that they can provide you with additional detail. If the board objects to this, it would trigger the, basically the mediation process between the city and the county to try to resolve the objection. That's just background context for the board.
Thank you. I believe we have a speaker. I'll go ahead and take you. Name and address for record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Erin Tilton with Sterns Weaver Miller, on behalf of the applicant Azalia Property Group, or Azalia Land Group. I think Madam Attorney covered it, but I just wanted to make it clear to the board that this is a voluntary annexation. So while I do hear the concerns about other property owners not being included in the annexation, there is a process for them to voluntarily petition to annex as well. This applicant cannot force them to be part of the annexation. That would be improper under the statute. Also, based on your memorandum of understanding with the city, this property does meet the definition of being contiguous to the city boundary. I understand that it may not be immediately clear based on the map, but because it is abutting the road right of way, and that is adjacent to city property, that qualifies as contiguous under your memorandum with the city. And the last point I would make is just that there's no development plan for this property at this point. This is just an annexation. If it were approved, we would have to be permitted with the city. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the commission has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Comban.
I will defer to, if it's okay with you, defer to.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you. This question is for Madam Attorney. You mentioned does not, was the third criteria, does not create annexes that would, can you repeat the third criteria you mentioned?
Enclaves.
Enclaves?
Correct.
And meaning it can't, I understand that, correct? Meaning it can't create other areas that are next to it that don't get serviced, that make it hard, that only this area gets serviced?
Yeah, it's actually defined statutorily. An enclave means any unincorporated, improved, or developed area that is enclosed within and bounded on all sides by a single municipality, or by a single municipality in a natural or man-made obstacle that allows the passage of vehicular traffic to that unincorporated area only through the municipality, which is why this does not create an enclave. It doesn't meet either of those definitions.
Thank you. And if the, one of my concerns is the other, as discussed, the other lots where those owners haven't, that have been developed, that are neighborhoods that have been there, is there any reason they wouldn't likely, if they wanted to voluntarily request to be annexed, that they would not? I know you can't see their request, they haven't made it, but are there any known hurdles that make it different for existing neighborhoods to request to voluntarily annex and meet those criteria versus the undeveloped?
Well, looking at the map, I can't tell you that it doesn't meet any of those three. Now, that would be aside from what, anything that a feasibility study might show, or any information that our public works staff might have about that other property. But if those other property owners want to do that, that's what the voluntary annexation process is for, and they can initiate that through the city if they would like.
Thank you. And?
Yeah. Single ownership really is, makes voluntary annexation so much easier. The problem you have with some of these legacy subdivisions is you have to have a certain number of those property owners who want to annex. And even under the involuntary annexation process, if the city wanted to initiate that process, a certain number of, there would have to be a referendum in that area, and a certain number of those property owners would have to vote to annex. So there are other, there's other recourse for other property owners who may qualify who want to annex themselves as well.
Okay. Do you know how much, and this may be a question for staff, or, I'll just ask the question to the chair. Does anyone know the information, how much it might cost a property owner to go through this process?
Can I ask your question?
Yeah.
Right now, we're voting on specific annexation of a voluntary annexation that these good folks are asking for. I think some of the questions that you're, that you're on in the line that you're going down is actually trying to figure out more information about it. I would kind of rather do that in a workshop setting, if we're going to go in that direction. But on this, can we focus specifically on this annexation?
I'll withdraw that question. I have a quick question then. So part of the rule is to be contiguous. So if this were annexed in, then that means the lot next further, so touching the furthest east corner of this lot would then be contiguous with the urban services area?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Comban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support the annexation of this property. This is a private property owner. They own the entire parcel. It's touching city limits. I don't think it's a stretch. I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're carving a piece of land that's, you know, not already contiguous to city limits. But Commissioner Proctor, I do share sentiment with you. If you have pieces of, if they're parcels or neighborhoods on the South Side, South West Side, that you think are beneficial to look at bringing into city limits, that do have better services, I would support that as well. But this is, this is a private property owner. If their goal is down the road to create more housing, then we need affordable housing. So I'm going to continue to support initiatives in our community that create density and create more housing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there a substitute motion?
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Is there a substitute motion? Is there a substitute motion?
No, no substitute motion.
I'm very... Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In reading item number six, I don't know. It appeared non-controversial because it was a voluntary annexation request by the property owner. However, I appreciate Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Caban for raising, you know, certain issues related to this and also concerns about maybe some disparate treatment as far as other sections of Tallahassee within the urban services area. But it's my thought that perhaps, and Commissioner Proctor said, well, we need to write a letter or we need to get some information. I think it's a way that we can address the concerns without denying this request because we have a request that meets all the legal qualifications for voluntary annexation. And I would be concerned about any legal ramifications for the county if the commission votes to deny it and it meets all the legal criteria. So, it's not a substitute motion, Mr. Chairman, but I believe at some point, you know, we could take Commissioner Proctor's suggestion and maybe get further information from the city, look at the disparity as far as locations, as far as even communities right around the area that's requesting the voluntary annexation. So, I will support the recommendation from staff to approve this annexation.
So, it seems like to me, we have... I know I got one, two, three that's willing to support the recommendation from staff. Is there another commissioner that's willing to support the recommendation from staff? I have a four, three at least that's going to... Five, two that's going to support the recommendation from staff, but I have no substitute motion. So, we could take up the original motion, Commissioner Proctor, and it looks like at this point it would likely fail, or we could just ask for a substitute motion. Now, I do agree with some of the... And we've actually had this conversation before, Commissioner Proctor, on past items even before. The majority of the folks here were here before. And I think the suggestion before, and I'll say it again, is that we, as a board, look at our voluntary and involuntary annexation process and then come back to the table with the city to see what kind of changes can be made. I mean, I even have a thought there, an argument, that if it's close and contiguous to the urban services line, then when does it stop? Because then, once this property gets annexed in, when then there's another property on the other side of the line that's contiguous at that point, does that property get annexed in? After a while, the area just grows and grows and grows, and we don't have any kind of repercussion or any kind of way to kind of monitor that or at least start to have a conversation about where the growth is going. So, I do like the idea of us just maybe... Because I don't think we've had a workshop to that effect to talk about what annexation, voluntary and involuntary annexation looks like. Maybe we start with a workshop here and then from that point, see, okay, is it worth us sitting down with the city commission and having a conversation about strategically, when we have these annexations come in, what are we looking for? Are we seeing a lot more annexation on the north side than the south side? You know, what is the cost of annexation? Is cost a barrier for those people who don't have as much money to... That may want to look at annexation? These are all questions that we can ask in a workshop setting, but I just think right now, just to focus on this particular annexation, we're in a position where we're pretty much five, two to go with it. And I don't see any reason why, right now, we should not vote in favor of this, but I do think we should. They could maybe get in our ducks in a row and looking at how we do annexations from this point on before another annexation comes in, because I would imagine that if another one comes in, we're going to have the same conversation again, just like we had at the previous annexation. And Commissioner Proctor, to your credit, you do continue to bring this up, and it's become something that you fought pretty hard for. So, I would like to see us, you know, really have... Dig into this type of conversation and see what we can do about it. I just don't think today is the saying to do such. So, Commissioner Proctor, you kind of see where the lady of land is here on the floor. I don't have a substitute motion, but I'll let you lead us from here.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. There's some things that a person elected represents people, is trying to make a point. There are times when you get run over, five to two, six to one. I've seen many of those. It didn't affect my IQ. And I think that as long as we are woke enough and we have enough IQ to intelligently recognize these distinctions, because properties of which... Properties of which I am pointing out, homes side by side by side, hundreds, hundreds, I mean, hundreds. We can't get lights on Crawfordville Road. These people are paying 8% increase. They just can't get the services. And I think the Commissioner O'Keefe has raised a good point. Capacity, does the city have the pipes to continue to flow more sewage and pipes that can't carry the load that's already there? So, it's not a bad question. It's an infrastructural readiness question. And based on last week's experience of more than a million gallons of raw sewage in that area, Commissioner Welch's district, but that's an environmental impact for his district. And we don't know the ripple and what that means for various areas that will continue to see that kind of thing. But it's all out of sight. It's out of mind. It's out of... You don't see this thing. But the fairness of what we're paying for, 8.5% increase, Mr. Chairman, is not... And then, let's be honest. I mean, be really, really honest, Mr. Chairman. And if we put on a... Could anonymity, sign a little survey. Do we really believe that the civic literacy of our county is the same in all quadrants? Do you really believe that the citizens on all sides of town know exactly what that lady is talking about? This is a voluntary annexation. We have an involuntary annexation, and you can sign up and everybody... How many people know what that means? So, when you're looking at levels of civic literacy differentials, where people can hire that lady and her firm and pay them, and other communities can barely pay the light bill, they don't know how to organize or get those who know how to represent that. And I'm not saying that everybody in the office is smart. I'm saying they got enough money to hire smart people who can lead the charge. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to get run over. Some things is well worth your legacy retaining and getting run over on this. I'm honored to do.
Well-made, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Caban, you're in queue. Okay. All right. All of us favoring the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion fails, five, two. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Commissioner Welch, the second. Seconded by Commissioner Caban. All of us favoring the case by saying aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, five to two. Mr. Administrator, will you send out a... Send us a... Make a part of the next agenda, a status report on voluntary and involuntary annexation, what we can and cannot do there, how it works?
Yes, if that's the direction the board, it would be your policy to vote on.
Any objection to such? All right. So, moved by Commissioner Minor, seconded by Commissioner O'Keefe. Any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. My thoughts here is we have a status report, so staff tells us exactly what we can and can't do. If you guys like to pull it, we can pull it, have a discussion, and then go to workshop. I think we're pretty limited, but I do think there is a conversation to be had there just on, as Commissioner Proctor said, just where we are deciding, where we are seeing annexations. And even Commissioner Proctor, I thought you made an excellent point about those who have the means and intellect to really go through this process of annexation and voluntary annexation, involuntary annexation. How do we begin to educate our community on those types of things in certain communities that don't know if they want to go down this road and maybe even have attorney offices that maybe are willing to do some pro bono work to help folks get through that process? There's a will and a way there. I do agree with a lot of your sentiment there and things that you said, but I think with the caring and the thoughts that we have there, we have to create some solutions as well. So, some solutions as well. And so, let's start with that status report. If we like the status report, we'll leave it there. If not, then we can pull it, have a discussion, maybe go to workshop, and we'll move on from there. All right? All right, thank you. Any other speakers, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, one additional speaker on non-agended items, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, name and address for record, please, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Stanley Sims. I currently live at 1320 Avondale Way, but I also own a piece of property just beyond the four-way stop on Minkasicki Road. Commissioner Proctor, you're looking at a Leon County resident that is a victim of taxation without representation. Why? My property on Minkasicki Road, Talcum owns the line, but I pay city electric. So, I'm supporting a system that I have no voice in the vote. Now, we want to talk about the level of services. My house in Avondale, they come by and make sure that they spray down our sidewalk. Hell, I... Excuse me. I didn't even know you do that. I get affordable services in Avondale because my demographics in Avondale are a little lighter than that piece of property that I have facing Minkasicki Road where the skins is a little darker. I don't like coming with a problem with no solutions. And also, I don't want to go through the voluntary annexation process because I don't want an 8% tax increase when no one took any exercise to reduce a current budget. So, I don't want you guys to put that on me. But what I would like for you to do is, how can I support our services over there? I got Commissioner O'Keefe. Drive by if you want. I welcome you. I've got two dead trees that's been threatening my house for over a year. He knows. If I live in the city, even though I'm paying city utilities, they have a program, an energy services program, that can remove those trees. This is where it does not work. And so, my example, Mr. Chairman, is that you not only look about annexation, but we also need to look about the caliber of services for individuals that vote for you but can't vote for them, but we support both budgets. That is what I believe, Mr. Welch, is taxation without representation. But I escaped that 8% tax increase. Boom, shakalaka. I'm wearing these pink tennis shoes in love with my mama, who is fighting the good fight of cancer. I love you, and there's nothing you guys can do about it. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sims, and thank you so much for your... Yes, those were nice.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Administrator, do we have any speaker... No, I'm sorry. We already did that part. We're on general business, right? We are. All right. Item number 21.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 21 provides a proposed overview of the board's annual retreat scheduled for January 22nd. And Commissioners, as you know, your annual retreat is the board's opportunity to review the county's five-year strategic plan. At that time, we also have scheduled for you a presentation, which will get into some detail on the county's plans for the bicentennial, again, celebration and with a preview on all the community events and programs and activities planned throughout the year. So, with that, Commissioners, we have no speakers on this item, and we're recommending option one.
Commissioner Caban. Item... Staff recommendation, been moved by Commissioner Caban. Is there a second? Seconded by the vice chair. Any objection? You want to speak?
No, no.
Okay. I got you. Seeing none, show it as approved, six, zero. Commissioner Minor, our chambers, item number 22.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 22 seeks the board's authorization of the HFA, the Housing Finance Authorities, to issue bonds in the amount of $35,000 or $35 million to the Lake Bradford Department Affordable Housing Project. In building on the county's efforts to increase the stock of affordable housing, this project would construct an additional 156 affordable rental units exclusively for low-income households. With your approval, Commissioners, this project would be in addition to the more than 1,000 new affordable housing units approved by the board that will be built in the community over the next 12 to 18 months. And because of that, we're recommending option one and happy to answer any questions you might have, and we have no speakers on this item.
Still moved?
Staff recommendation, been moved by Commissioner O'Keefe. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by the vice chair. All of us favoring the case by saying aye. I'm sorry.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Who are the owners of this ECG from? Where are they from? Are they from our county or from California?
Well, even though we do not have speakers, I do know that we do have representatives here who may be able to answer your questions. With that, I invite representatives from the HFA who may be able to answer that question, or Shankton, either one, please.
Hi, Shankton. The last time we had one of these big boy bond issues was, I believe, over on Magnolia and Meridian, that area. And the company that was putting that forward came here to use our good names, and it was a company out of California. Who are the people who are seeking to use our good names and places on Kissimmee Street?
They are based out of Nashville, Tennessee.
Okay. Is there anybody... What is it about our community that people from Tennessee and California and far away can come and borrow our names and use us like this? But we don't have local developers who can do the same thing.
Madam Attorney?
Just very briefly, I would like to note that the applicant is actually a Florida Limited Partnership. It is owned by a Tennessee company. So, it actually is a Florida company who has applied.
Is there anybody in Leon County that can do stuff like this? We just need people to come hold our hands, do this.
The HFA... The HFA makes sure that everyone knows about the opportunity to apply for bond issuance. So, that is something that we work every day on to make sure that our partners here locally as well as statewide and nationally to know about the opportunities that's available to apply through the HFA or the Florida Housing Finance Corporation for funding. We need more affordable housing, so any partners that we can get here in our community to build those is a win for our community, and that's what we continue to try to thrive to do through the process with HFA.
What is affordable? What y'all calling affordable? I see a lot written up about the affordable, and that certainly whets the appetites of a commission who we're all committed to solving that crisis of housing. And the last time I checked, an affordable home was, what, $300,000 or something like that?
Yeah. For this project, we're talking about rental units and rental units specifically. We're talking about for individuals and households in our community that earn 80% or less of the area median income. So, you're talking about less for family four, less than $40,000. But then, what we're talking about when we're talking about affordable, we're talking about rent that's 30% of their income. So, that's when we talk about affordable housing, that's what we're trying to thrive for. And then, for this project specifically, 39 of those units will be for families that are what we call very low income. Those are those that are making 50% or less of the area median income, and that is the highest need in Leon County because we've got over 18,000 households that are paying more than 50%, that earn less than 50% of their area median income here in our community.
And I want the commission... I'm not against this project. I am for local... I'm always for local cooking, and every time we use local people on our local name, our local money, our local... That's what I'm for. The metrics of who's poor, oftentimes that first wave of people might qualify. The metrics of who's poor, oftentimes that first wave of people might qualify, and who keeps up in subsequent years with whether or not the people who are staying there have not been outpriced. And we don't have rent control in this community. We don't have a union for renters. We don't have rent control, and I'm not sure how we monitor price index relative to income of people who in the private sector and who are seeking an affordable rent. And I know that word affordable changes, evolves, escalates, and goes up and up. So we're calling, what this commission is calling affordable right now, may well, it just may well, numbers change, and those numbers go up, and the people who on Kissimmee Street may not be able to stay abreast.
Chair, if I may, Mark Hendrickson, Financial Advisor to the Housing Finance Authority. State law does not allow you to impose rent control, but it does not keep a developer from voluntarily entering into rent control. The developer in this case will be entered into a land use restriction agreement for 50 years that will limit the rents on the units, all of these units, to an affordable level. And as an example, when you ask about what are these rent levels, well, for the 30% units, it's as low as $483. For the people at 60% median, it may be about $1,100. They're well under market, and they will remain under market for 50 years.
Thank you, sir. So I obviously have a job...
I have to ask him a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to ask, and I don't know, County Administrator might know, as far as this particular housing project... Well, first of all, I'm excited because within a year and a half, we should have over 1,000 new units. And of course, we know we need rental units for our people that are on the streets, are homeless, and as Shinkton said, for those that earn 50% or less than the AMI. In this analysis, it pointed out that we have some residents that earn 80% of the AMI and less. And I mean, it's just, it's hard to phantom think about families living with that type income where they're spending over 50% of their gross income on housing. But my question was, what is the enforcement agency? Who has the oversight, Mr. County Administrator, to make sure the developer adheres to the land use restrictions as far as rent and the amount of rent that's charged?
Both. It'll be the HFA as well as the Florida Housing Finance Corporation because they are also receiving funding through the state also.
So during that 50-year...
Absolutely.
Contract year period.
So right now, there are projects that have been approved previously by the Board, and I want to say monthly or so, we get reports back saying, like, for example, a project off Woodville, like San Marco, that says, hey, here's the projects, here's the developments that are restricted, or units that are restricted, and they are required to make sure that people that are living there in those units meet the income restrictions as approved by the Board.
Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Chair, I will support this particular initiative as well, and I think staff made it clear that it's no fiscal impact on the county at this point. And I appreciate, you know, individuals willing to, companies, developers, willing to address the need for more affordable rental housing here in our county. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So as I'm looking at that, I love the fact that we got 54 units that's at 60% of AMI or below, but I'm really targeting or looking at targeting at 60% of AMI below, which is really where the majority of our problem lies when it comes to affordable housing in the stock not keeping up with the actual demand. And so I would have actually taken maybe a few less, because I understand it's a balancing game there, they got to make money. A few less of those 70% of AMI, maybe bump those up to 80%, so thereby I can get more of that 60% or below. Does that make sense? Because really, that is really where we're having the biggest problem when it comes to affordable housing, affordable rentals in particular, is that 60% or below, we got about 15,000 households and about 120 units that just came online, and we just, we're not cranking them out enough. And so in future, I don't know if we have consultations or conversations with these folks. In the future, if we could have more conversation about, hey, listen, I understand that you got to make money, but is there a way that you can create your financing or your structure to where we get even more, or the large majority of your units be that 60% of AMI below? Like I said, maybe playing with that 70% number, maybe giving more 80%, so you can get more 60, that kind of thing. That would have been more desirable for me, but the fact that we got 54 units coming online is just as good as anything else. And so with that being said, I have no other speakers in queue to speak. Commissioner Proctor, you'd be the last speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I hear what you're saying, and it's accurate, it's right, it's good. But we're giving somebody $35 million, they don't have any skin in the game. They have no sacrifice, they're taking no risk, they're insulated. Give me $35 million, I'll build you 54 units too. So at what point, what are we asking for? And what you're asking for is a higher percentage of people who might be of a lower income. It makes sense because they ain't putting no money up. That's not what they're putting in. So I'm curious about people who can come from faraway places, I don't want to use the word, I won't use that word, but they use poverty numbers and conditions, and can get amassed a lot of money with no real skin in the game, and they can walk away, took no loss. This is something concerning to me, in particular over on Kissimmee Street. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Motion on the floor is for staff recommendation by Commissioner O'Keefe, seconded by Commissioner Caban. I'm sorry, Vice Chair Cummings.
Skin in the game.
All is in favor, motion pointed by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next item, item number 23, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 23 seeks the Board authorization to submit an application for a federal HUD grant on affordable housing and authorize us to conduct a public hearing to receive public input as required by the grant. Again, Commissioners, this grant will provide up to $10 million in affordable housing, which could include planning and development activities as detailed in the item. We intend to apply for the maximum of $10 million. The item provides what we would intend to do programmatically across the Board, including utilization of some of our ship dollars for match. Again, it's a competitive grant, so we're just sort of throwing deep on this, given the Board's considerable emphasis in this area of affordable housing, which we've talked about tonight, and certainly the Board's done a lot of work on leading up to now. And with that, Commissioners, I have no speakers on this item, and we recommend options one and two, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Move options one and two, Mr. Chairman. Options one and two have been moved by immediate pass. Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Minor. I have Madam Vice Chair, you want to speak on this?
I just, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to applaud the County Administrator and staff. This was a short turnaround time for the grant application. I know they're working on it. They will have it submitted by the deadline, which is the end of this month, and I think it's certainly a win-win for Leon County if we are able to receive the grant. And I'm also excited that HUD has identified our area as a priority geographical area as far as households that are burdensome, and I understand we have over 18,000 households right here in Leon County that are identified as burdensome households. 18,000, that's a lot of households and houses here in Leon County. So if we can move the needle backwards on that, Shinkton, I applaud you guys, so I certainly will be supporting this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Vince, how many of us and who all else is applying? And do we have a snowball's chance? Is this a hail mary in terms of competitive nature of the grants we're going after?
Well, not to... And this is open, this is open and competitive. There's a nationwide pot here which is limited. This is the up-to amount that we can apply for, but I would be remiss if I didn't note that nobody else has Shinkton Lamy on their team, only us. And so, no pressure. But yeah, we expect this to be very competitive.
Okay, very good. We appreciate this effort indeed. As Vice Chair has pointed out, 18,000 households in our community, of which 80, I'm sorry, with which over 50% of their income is used for housing. Over 18,000 households that use more than 50% of their income simply to pay their rent is an amazing number. So all things, Shinkton, you're our quarterback, and we know you're going to call the right plays, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator, you said some of these will be used for matching dollars, correct? If we ever contain this?
Yes, we do. We have outlined what our up-to-match obligation would be under this grant. And again, just to not ruin the moment, Shinkton knows Jelani's sitting right behind him if we have an issue with this. So no, it would be, Jelani would be the quarterback on this one.
All is in favor, motion pointed by saying aye. All is opposed, motion carries without objection. Item number 24, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. Speaking of quarterbacks, this item seeks your approval, Commissioners, on agreement to host the 2023 FHSAA, mouthful, Florida Championship Games at FAMU's Bragg Stadium, December 7th through the 9th. This item also seeks the Board's ratification of memorandum of understanding between Leon County, FHSAA, and FAMU to host the event. If approved, the projected budget to host all nine, and again, this would be hosting all nine state championships here in Leon County, which is a big deal. The, that's estimated to be 350,000, and adequate funds are available in the tourism fund balance, as we've noted. Approximately $150,000 of the county's expenses are estimated to be offset through ticket sales. Again, Commissioner Cummings noted short turnaround just a moment ago. Let me acknowledge our tourism team because they had a very short turnaround in putting this together to get the full complement of the championship series here, and they were able to do so. This will have an $11 million annual, or $11 million impact to the county, and with that, we recommend options one, two, and three, and we have no speakers on this item.
Option one, two, and three is moved by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Caban. Any speakers? Commissioner Proctor?
Mr. Chairman, I, as a member of the Tourism Development Council, representing our Board, I wanted to thank Ms. Carey, Post, her staff. We've seen some of the photos of them being out in Bragg Stadium at the press conference that announced Florida High School Athletic Association would be coming to Bragg Stadium, which affectionately I call the house that Jake Gaither built. Carey, thank you. Thank you for the arrangement of that. I think you read a letter, some comments that I forwarded to you at that event and all like that. But I wanted this commission to be aware that the District One County Commissioner, there has been a state championship in Bragg Stadium before, and in 1976, the District One County Commissioner quarterback a state championship win for FAMU High. And I need you to know that in those four playoff games, that FAMU High scored 203 combined points against four opponents whose collective total of points scored was three points, and Trenton managed a field goal, and everybody else got purely shut out. So we played good championship ball in St. Petersburg, Shorecrest High School, a team of which Jack Nicholas' son was a member, would tell you about a smashing that was like 38 to 0. And in that same year, please note, at Bluntstown High School, won the 2A state championship. Great team, and when they came to Bragg Stadium for the 10th and final game of the year, FAMU High prevailed 21 to 0 against the state's 2A champion as well. So it was a very good team, I know that.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, I'm... Where's our director at? Carey, I'm requesting that Commissioner Proctor have an opportunity to toss the coin at one of the games for his being District One Commissioner, and also him being able to live his glory days of quarterbacking that state championship team.
Scrivviness have all of this, they capture that. Host supporter comments all day.
Commissioner Proctor, you were the quarterback?
Where did I start?
You were the quarterback?
I love to see the...
Commissioner Welch, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to echo Commissioner Proctor's statements and also say I was born two years after that quarterback won that championship at Bragg Stadium in 1978 in a little city called Jackson, Mississippi. But, you know, I'm still proud of Commissioner Proctor, quarterback Proctor, for all those smashings that he delivered in that great year of 1976, that bicentennial year. I just want to echo and say congratulations to our tourism development folks and Ms. Post. Obviously, our next item is going to deal with sports tourism, and you guys know, and I think that a lot of us agree, you know, this is something we want to explore and increase in our community, bringing folks to the capital city to play sports, put heads in beds, and people in restaurants, and this is a great example of teamwork that has led to, I think it's the first time ever, right, that all nine are held in one place? Is that correct? All nine championships? No, that's happened before. Okay, well, never mind, but we're going to pretend that it is the first time.
Well, no, actually, in 2020, it happened because they were supposed to be somewhere else, but because of the pandemic, they brought them all here. This is the first time that we've actually been chosen for all nine.
Got you, got you. And my understanding is that's because we did so good in 2020. So I think it's awesome that Bragg's going to host it. I think it's a perfect venue for it, you know, great facility and improvements have been made, so this is exciting. I think it's an awesome step in the right direction. I'd love it if Leon County became the permanent home of the FHSAA state football championship, so that'd be the next step. So thank you, guys, congratulations for your team. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I wanted to give staff, particularly the tourism staff, a big credit for this because the Sports Council, probably back in 2016 when I first started, one of the conversations we had was we wanted the state championships to come back to City of Tallahassee and Leon County. We just by happenstance got the opportunity in 2020 to host because of some things going on with the pandemic and other locations. And like you said, Commissioner Welch, they did such a good job that the next year, they gave us 1 through 4A for a couple of years, and this year, they're bringing all of the games right back here to Tallahassee and City of Tallahassee and Leon County. And I have on good record that they would love to be able to keep the games here in Leon County, and so that's a testament to just how well our Tourism Development Council is doing, our Sports Council and the staff there, and I look forward to having some great games, Commissioner Proctor tossing the coin for one of those games, and us just really being able to really take advantage of that $11 million economic impact that's coming here to Leon County. And it goes to show, as you said, Commissioner Welch, that investing in our sports infrastructure within the county does pay dividends because people will travel to see their children play in these sports competitions, and the more we're able to bring things like the state championship games and cross-country championships and things like that, the more economic development dollars we'll have as a result of tourism and sports tourism in particular. So all is in favor, motion on the floor made by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Caban for staff recommendation, indicated by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries objection. Item number 25, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keeping with that theme, and again, as is reflected in these items, sort of the sustained focused effort of the Board on many items. The item before you provides just a quick update on the sports feasibility, market feasibility study that was requested by the Board and made a retreat priority just at your 2023 retreat, that you asked that we bring back an agenda item to consider an updated sports market feasibility study. And what this item does, again, just provides a quick check-in. Commissioners, as you know, the Board's direction, that direction coincided... as, as you know, uh, the board, uh, the board's direction, that direction coincided with Blueprint's master planning efforts of the North Florida Fairgrounds Project, uh, which includes a sports marketing, uh, feasibility analysis on the viability of including sports facilities to attract regional competitions, uh, as part of the future redevelopment of the 107-acre, uh, fairgrounds. Uh, so with that, uh, effort, Commissioners, we were just recommending in this item, uh, that we, uh, take a slight pause in, in issuing a, a larger sports feasibility analysis. We're recommending to get the, uh, the, that, that, um, uh, master plan, uh, back to you, uh, which is scheduled to be back before the IA on November 7th and that we use the data as a result of that effort, uh, and, and bring that back to you, which would help inform, uh, any future, um, direction that we may get with our, with respect to our larger efforts. So with that, Commissioners, we're recommending, um, option one and happy to answer any questions you might have.
The motion for staff recommendation, moved by Commissioner Welch, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Any objection? Seeing none, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, this is, uh, largely, um, in, in response to, to dynamics. One, I saw that, um, uh, something was in newspaper about Ms. Petley, uh, over the District School Board, uh, talking about, um, some money, 1.3 million for Gene Cox Stadium, uh, improvement. Um, I recognize, uh, I hadn't heard of any ask coming from the school district for Gene Cox, but I really believe that, um, I can support the direction of the conversation that was in the newspaper. And I think that, um, um, Carey, I won't hazard a, um, any kind of guess, but I am aware that, as was pointed out by, um, one of my colleagues, that we had state championships at Gene Cox. Petley said we need some repairs over there and somehow it's tiptoed over to Bragg Stadium. I have no idea the dynamics of the move from Gene Cox to Bragg Stadium. I mean, more teams, larger venue, I don't know. But I think that, uh, we should not suffer, uh, the disrepair of a stadium that bears the name of one of Florida's greatest high school coaches. And we should not suffer for the public stadium by which, um, all of our area high schools, uh, play and all of the students, uh, 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 coalesce to come and eat hot dogs and have fun. We should not let, uh, we used to call it Capital Stadium, uh, we should not let Gene Cox Stadium fall into the, uh, degree of disrepair that the fairground facilities, uh, are suffering. We should not let Gene Cox Stadium, of which all of our children, uh, in high school ball and soccer and all kind of stuff, fall into disrepair at the level with which Bragg Stadium had fallen. I'm just saying that everything in the South Side don't have to be raggedy and we ought to do all we can and not ignore it simply because of where it's located. So in this study, uh, whatever we need to do to prep and prop Gene Cox up, which Lincoln plays in, uh, Childs, everything around here play in that stadium, let's not let it get doghouse raggedy and, uh, ignored. So I'm, I'm, I'm making a pitch that the existing structure be looked at for, uh, augmented improvement. Um, and maybe they're, they're being asked that we look at a different venue, but I was sensitive to its, um, debilitating, um, structure. And, um, I don't want it just because it's in my district that it, it can be up there and layup it be, uh, jacked up. I don't want a jacked up stadium.
Thank you. Um, so I will confirm that, uh, Gene Cox, as well as the, 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 uh, larger footprint was included in the, um, study that was, that's done by Blueprint. I want to, I don't want to get too much into it, but I think what I, I think it was myself and Commissioner Welch who kind of checking this at the retreat, what I was looking for is, is, is how do we include Gene Cox in this thing to, to, to where we are really starting to develop that whole area into a sports complex? And so it looks like the same conversation that we're having here then end up having, happening at Blueprint. And so everything that you said, Commissioner Proctor, will be a part of that study that comes back, uh, to Blueprint where we had that discussion. I'm pretty excited about that piece of it because we also have, I think at this point, $30 million or so pot of money to deal, to, to, to deal with. We're looking at how do we, how do we begin to, to improve the area to make it to the sports complex that we're talking about, that we would like for it to see. But I will say I don't want to, let's focus more so on the county side of it and a little less on Blueprint since we're not in the Blueprint meeting. I think the, the attorney would appreciate that piece of it. So, uh, Commissioner Welch, give me my final comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real briefly, I just want to echo what you said. Yeah, Commissioner Proctor, I support you 100% on that idea. Um, I think it is.
Look at that $12 million, you know, that helped out.
Um, I, I think the fairgrounds master plan is including that, is my understanding. Um, okay, through Blueprint. So, uh, look forward to seeing that when it comes back to Blueprint and, um, you know, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the floor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll go now to item number 26.
All of that $12 million, he was gonna break us off a couple of million and put down there. When you felt, when you felt that pain for me.
Y'all can make, y'all can handle negotiations in Blueprint meetings. Uh, we're moving now to item number 26, which is reappoint, full board reappointments to the COCA board as well as Tourism Development Council. On the COCA, on the COCA board, it looks like we are, we have Beth Keating looking to be reappointed. Is there a motion? Motion made by the Vice Chair, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Caban, any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. Uh, we need three more appointments to the COCA board. Lucia Fishburne is not eligible for reappointment. Paul Lewis Jr. is not seeking reappointment and Nathan Archer is resigning. Um, I would be interested in appointing Kimberly Bryant, uh, in place of Lucia Fishburne. Is there motion to that effect?
I move.
Moved by the Vice Chair, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Caban, is there any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. I'm looking for a motion, uh, for Paul Lewis's seat who, who cannot seek reappointment and Nathan Asher.
I move Neil Mooney.
Neil Mooney has been moved by the Vice Chair, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Is any, is there any objections to such? Seeing none, show it as approved. Is there appointment for, for Mr. Archer? He's not seeking, or he's resigning, we need to fill that appointment. Uh, we have three eligible appointees there.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the, the mayor has recommended Ms. Hadley Peterson. I move her appointment.
Hadley Peterson's been moved by Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Caban, any objection? Seeing none, show it as approved. We'll move now to, uh, TDC appointments. It looks like Matt Thompson's looking to be reappointed and Joshua Brock is the hoteler, which is the only eligible applicant. Is there a motion for Joshua Brock and Matt Thompson?
So move.
Both have been moved by Commissioner Caban, seconded by Commissioner Welch.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, um, I brought this up before, uh, as we were making these appointments to the TDC, uh, we talked, we talked about the, uh, disparity of representation between the county and the city, which has two, um, sitting, city commissioners. Um, I, I asked our board, uh, for, you know, some discussion about, uh, and I'm not sure if the, if the county attorney advises on why we could not have, um, e- equal representation, uh, on the TDC and have two county commissioners. What must we do to be whole?
Yes. Madam Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's statutory. Statutorily, the county gets one representative and two municipal representatives within that county have seats. Leon County is an anomaly. It only has one city. So unlike in most jurisdictions where there's, there is no more than one seat per local governmental entity on the TDC, Leon County, we have one county and two city of Tallahassee, but it is statutory.
Very good. I, I have this board to know that it's well represented, uh, on that board.
Commissioner Proctor, you were talking about how long you fought to get on that board. Thank you so much for your, for your, for doing your civic duty to the board representing us well. I, I would like to thank that, 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 uh, championship come, those championships coming to Leon County and District One was all your work. All those in favor of the motion pointing, came by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Administrator, is there any more business before the commission?
That concludes general business, Your General.
Commissioners, we're back here for public hearing at 6 o'clock.